Okay, we're gonna get started, Heidi.
Okie dokie.
People in the room, and they're gonna eat all the goodies if we can get started. All right. Okay. Um, I believe the meeting room is, uh, everyone has been admitted. I will keep an eye on that, make sure people let meeting. Welcome, everyone, to the Monday. And if you're not speaking, turn off your, uh, your, you know, your microphone. Thank you. So, good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Norberth Planning Commission. I'm Todd Bressi, the chair, and seeing that we have all members present, I would like to call the meeting to order. Now, just again, for the record, at 7:03 PM, and all commissioners, Commissioner Brower, Commissioner Cornwell, Commissioner Boyes, and Commissioner Spear are present. Today, we have a busy, um, um, in my update for Chair's update, I will have a slight, a brief update on three onward, as well as zoning hearing board. We have one land development application, 32 Sabine Avenue. We have a discussion of the ordinance under development for President Norberth. Another new business, we have two items. We will have a discussion of Greenpoint's program with two guests from our community to talk to us about that. And then we will have a discussion about potential amendments to section 502B, multi-family house building. So with that, I'll move on to the first item of the agenda, which is the approval of minutes from January 2021. Now, you all know I submitted a draft to those minutes to review, and Commissioner Boyes has submitted revised draft for those minutes, so I'd actually like to consider those as the, um, uh, minutes on the table. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted by Heidi, Jim Spear?
So moved.
Second. Heidi, you can second, Heidi, that's okay.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion or comment about the minutes or about the modifications that Heidi proposed? Any further corrections? Okay, if there's no discussion in the minutes, then I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted by Heidi, please say aye.
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 Any opposed to approving the minutes as submitted by Heidi? No opposed, so the minutes are approved. Heidi, thank you for taking a look and giving us those markups. So as soon as I get those cleaned up, we will browse webpage. I do not yet have minutes from February 2021. Anyone here in the public who's curious about what happened at the planning commission meeting? Our main recommendations for that meeting were posted on our, on the front webpage in form of a letter to council. And you can watch the meeting on the, on the, on the Norberth Civic Association YouTube page. But we will, we're catching up with our minutes and we'll get to them next month. The second update I have is in regard to three onward. There really is nothing to report at all, but we did one query from the public about it. And we did receive correspondence from the applicant about their progress in following up on some of the conditions. And so the, the query that we received was from Terry Fox, who wanted to ask about the scout, the traffic study equipment that was installed on the streetlight, whether that was installed for the purpose of doing the traffic study for three onward, and expressed a concern about how a study could be done at this time when traffic volumes may be impacted COVID. She also had other concerns that she hopes will be studied in the, in the analysis, which are that the traffic signal does not allow for sufficient pedestrian clearance time. We have with us today our borough engineer, Eric Johnson, and we also have Chris Young, who is the civil engineer for that project. He's not here to discuss that project today, but he, he did, did know that in unofficial capacity, he, he could update a little bit on the progress they've made in arranging some of the, um, follow-ups in the, that were, that were agreed to in the conditions. Eric, do you have a, is there anything you can say about the question about the traffic study?
Yeah, good evening. So as Todd was kind of saying, the, as part of the forthcoming land development application that will come in from the applicant, they, in connection with the submission, will be required to submit their traffic impact study, which will evaluate the traffic in around the site now, what is proposed at the site, and then what any potential impact would be to the, on the surrounding traffic to the area. The, as my understanding, the applicant currently is going through with his professionals preparing of that study. And I do believe the equipment that was observed out in the field is part of the data collection. So to address the potential concern on traffic count in this time, that is a recognized issue, that potential reduction in traffic related to COVID, that has been recognized by PennDOT and the various traffic engineers that have been working on it. And there are various methods, historical traffic data, and other methods that will be used to, you know, evaluate and make sure the study is adequately representing the area. When this, the traffic study is submitted, it will be reviewed by my colleague, Mike Schneider, for Norberth, who is the Borough Traffic Engineer, as well as the Lower Marion Traffic Engineer, and as well as PennDOT. So, but until the study actually comes in, you know, I can't speak too much to any of the details. The applicant did consider, or did agree to in their sketch plan, that that study would include not only vehicle traffic, but also vehicle and pedestrian traffic in and around the area. So that's kind of where we stand at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, welcome. I know you're here for another dinner. I did touch basically, and you generously agreed to provide an informal unofficial response and update. So any information you can share with us, we, we in the public would be appreciative.
Yes, thanks. And so, you know, Mr. Johnson did a good job of, of answering the other question that those counters are out there for this project. And I agree with everything he said about the COVID, pre-COVID and post-COVID, that there are counts done before, and that the traffic engineers will discuss the best way to handle that in terms of, you know, a big part of what we have for that project is meetings. So we did reach out to the Lower Marion Township Environmental Advisory Council, the Norberth Borough Environmental Advisory Council, the Lower Marion Conservancy. We do have a date set up for the three of them to walk the site and discuss plantings and other mitigation measures within the floodplain. We do also have a meeting set up with the borough, and I believe the Public Works, the Borough Manager and Public Works Director regarding the, the crossing at the bridge. And we are still working to set up meetings with the Shade Tree Commission and Civic Association.
I believe at least the Civic Association meeting will be a public meeting. That, that's the intention. So keep your eye on the Civic Association's calendar if, if you would like to follow that meeting. Do any commissioners have any questions? Okay, well, thank you both, thank you, Eric.
Sorry, I was muted. Can I ask just one quick question? Will the walk of the site include a tree, a pre-development tree count and assessment of the health of the existing trees that are there?
I don't know if that will be handled on the walk, but the, the survey plan does show the existing trees. And now that the landscape architect is involved, I know that their firm typically does an evaluation and grades the trees according to how they feel. And then as part of the preliminary plans, we'll have to do the replacement calculation.
Yeah, I did have a look at that myself. I noticed a number of the trees in that side are in rough shape as it is. They're sort of growing wild, just to note that.
Nice, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, thank you, Chris. I know you were not here appearing formally on behalf of the project, so thank you for taking your time with the answer. The thing I would like to cover in the Chair's report is just to call your attention to three zoning hearing board processes that are underway at the moment. One, there was a meeting last Thursday, which was, the case was continued. It is regarding 102 Price Avenue, where an applicant would like to expand a house, build an addition, back deck, in order to accommodate the needs of a disabled resident in that, in that property, who lives at that, that property. And that evidence and testimony was heard, and the zoning hearing board decided to continue or defer a decision until its meeting at March 16th. The second case, it is hearing, it is on March 10th, and it regards 246 Iona Avenue. And it is an appeal of a zoning violation notice regarding a rear structure that includes what appears to be an apartment studio space over a garage, which is not permitted in the code. It's not permitted to have a second dwelling unit in an accessory structure. So that letter of violation was sent in December, and the applicant is appealing. The application is not clear whether they're also asking for variance or not, so I guess we will, we will find out on, on March 10th. Then the third zoning hearing board case is, is also March 16th. It is the return of 603 Essex Avenue, where a, a driveway had been created for the purposes of the construction of the project, and then remained after construction was complete. And I believe that former owner of the property, who owned it when the construction was occurring, received a zoning violation notice. And so the new owners of that property have applied to receive both a variance and a special exception to legalize that driveway. So that will be on March 16th, although I'm pretty sure all the records, most of the records are available on the zoning, zoning hearing board webpage. So that is, if you're interested in attending those, they are viewable by Zoom, just like this meeting. And finally, I will say, we have another land development application in front of us, but according to the schedule given to us by the borough, we, we will, we will not talk about it today. We will talk about it on April 5th. It is for 146 Marion Avenue. It's a subdivision and land development application. So that is what's on our plate these days. And I believe those materials are also, also on the webpage for anyone who would like to learn more about those, about those projects. That is my update. Chloe, is there anything that you would like to, to update us on from the point of view of the Montgomery County Planning Commission?
Thanks, Todd. Good evening, everyone. I just want to introduce my colleague, Mike Narco, which is also here. After planner, planner Maggie Dobbs left the planning commission, we are, a crew of us working together to serve Norberth in interim time. So Mike is covering land developments and land development reviews for the borough side. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Look forward to further discussion this evening.
Okay, Chloe, who's working on this subdivision and redevelopment?
That is yet another planner, Erin Holly.
All right. We hope we can have an update on that at our next meeting. I know that things, you know, when there's a transition, it takes time to get reorganized, but.
Right. And, yeah, I'll check in with him on that. I know that's also complicated by the fact that he, that that was primarily borough staff project. And there's been some, some changes there too. So, but actually, I, I believe the borough engineer was involved with that and might be even maybe perhaps better equipped to give an update than Erin.
I can give you the, the rough update. Erin did take over on handling that, as Chloe was saying. I believe where we stood when we met last month, just before Maggie left, she was at the point of reconciling all of the edits and all of the various changes. She had really been spearheading all, actually making all the changes. So I think Erin, we're meeting next week, I believe he was wrapping his head around all of the markups and trying to rectify into the final document. So that, that's kind of what we are, we'll be meeting next week. So you could probably have more of an update next month.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, then. So there being no other news, we will move on then to the next item on our agenda, which is a land development application, a tentative sketch plan for a subdivision and land development at 32 Sabine Avenue. And I believe this evening, we have with us both, the applicant, Vince Basato, and the applicant's engineer, Chris Young, who are here to discuss their project. We would welcome you both to give us a short synopsis of the project. We do have letters from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, the zoning officer and the engineer. And we'll just ask you to respond to those, as well as any questions that planning commissioners might have. But we appreciate your coming tonight to talk to us about your project. And we will turn it over to the floor. Chris or Vince, do either of you want to share a screen, or how would you like to proceed?
If I could share my screen, I can present the plan.
Okay, I will, I will. Yes, I can. I don't know if you can see my face getting red. Chris, can you remind me how to toggle that? A classic Zoom moment. Oh, here we go, sorry, now it comes up.
Yes.
Are you able to do that now? Okay.
Yes, no problem. So if you can, well, I guess I should introduce, I am the civil engineer for the project, Vince Basato. The applicant is also on the line. Vince, is there anything you'd like to say before I get into a description of the plan?
No, Chris, I think it's probably best if you proceed, and I can answer any questions that anyone might have during the process or even afterwards.
Okay, sounds good. So, welcome. This is the site plan showing the existing conditions. It's really a vicinity plan, so it can show some properties around, within 100 feet of this property. And so this is the property in the center of the screen. There's an existing triplex building that fronts Sabine Avenue. This is Sabine that runs up and down on the plan, north and south. You can see the north arrow straight up. And above, at the top of the plan is Conway Avenue, which runs left to right or east to west. And so you could see this existing building in red, a crosshatch showing it to be removed. It fronts Sabine Avenue. It is serviced by a common driveway that comes along the back of the property through the two, the two neighboring properties that are also off of Sabine Avenue. So that's the existing conditions. I can zoom in a little closer. There are some mature trees in the front of the site and also at the rear. And so this was an existing triplex building which would be removed. This is the proposed site plan. There'll be a new twin building, so two units. We'd have a new property line going right down the center with a twin unit on each side. They each have their own front porch and a walkway coming out on a 45-degree angle. We are trying to keep the two large trees that are closest to the street, that 32-inch beech tree and also a 12-inch Japanese maple. And so we have these walkie, walkways going around either side. The lot slopes from front to back. And so in the, on the lower level of, of the building would be the underground parking. So there is a garage in the rear of each of these with two parking spaces on each. There is then also a deck that would come off of the first floor in the rear for some outdoor space for, for each of the units. And then we will continue to use the common driveway that comes from the south here, from the neighboring properties to the south. At this stage, we are just in the tentative sketch phase. And so as you know, Norberth has three phases. There's tentative sketch, there's preliminary plan, and final plan. And so a tentative sketch really focused on the bulk zoning compliance, really just kind of the layout of the building and the lots and driveways, which in this case, I think is pretty straightforward. Separating the lot into two for that twin building and using the same driveway it has in the rear, so that there won't be any real disruption to, to Sabine Avenue. We do show this rectangle here, which would be a potential stormwater management system underneath the driveway, and then an overflow from that in the rear of the property. And as Mr. Bressi said, we do have review letters from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, the Norberth Township Engineer, and the Norberth Zoning Officer. I'm happy to go over those generally, or every item if you'd like. Essentially, they're all will comply items. There is one item that we would request a waiver for, and that is to create this new lot line down the center. There is a section of the Norberth code that says, you know, generally lot lines shouldn't have more than a two and a half to one ratio from, you know, one side to the other. Now, when you create twin, when you create a twin building, you, you know, I think that two and a half to one is, is generally more ideal for a single-family lot. I know if you, you know, know the code from, from Norberth, you know that a single-family lot's required to have 6,000 square feet and 40-foot lot width. The twin is required to have, I believe, 25-foot lot width and 3,000 square feet. And so if you do the math on that, you know, if you need, if you need 3,000 and a 25-foot width, that gets you 150-foot length, and just that length to width ratio is 3.75 to one. So I think the, I think this is a case where the subdivision code doesn't necessarily match with the zoning code requirements. And so that's why we would ask for a waiver of that code section. That's really the, I think, the most important comment to discuss. But I, I guess one other thing I should show are some potential elevations from the, the architect. You know, they are not required at this stage, and we're not submitted with the initial application. But we did email them about a week or two ago, just for staff and planning commission's review. And so this appear in the center of the building shows, or center of the, of the plan on the top. This is the front view of the building. You can see the doors on the outsides. And then this is the side view. You can see how it's, it's a story lower in the back, and that's where the garages are to access. You can see that deck at the first floor level, and then this is an elevation from the rear. So I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any further detail on the review letters if you'd like.
I'll unmute myself. Thank you, Chris. Before I ask for questions from the commissioners, and before, Chris, Kenny, I'd like to ask, first, Eric, are there any issues in your renewal here that are important to bring to our attention this evening?
I believe most of the comments by letter are just kind of form comments about information that'll be required by, during the preliminary plan. Stormwater will be required, additional easements and approvals for the various shared stormwater system, or clarifying the access driveway. But those are all documentation that we provide as part of land development process. Just confirming, they'll have to comply with the landscaping and tree replacement ordinance if it applies. And that's truly about it. So I know nothing really specific that stuck out at this time.
You mentioned you had a comment about reevaluating the level spreader.
Right, well, that would be, so I believe on the plan, as it was shown now, was the very preliminary layout of the stormwater system, having a shared system between the two properties. And one specific comment had been to reevaluate the location of that level spreader, perhaps a little farther away from the property line. But that, that can be, can, it would be addressed during the stormwater review of land development.
And then, Mike?
Yes?
You're on my screen. Oh, there you are.
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome.
Thank you.
But you would like to.
Um, sure. I, I guess I just wanted to follow up on the driveway easements, because that seemed a little unusual. In my experience reviewing subdivisions and land developments, is there a plan for matching the easements on the other property with the access drive?
To the, I know the applicant has been in discussions with the adjacent neighbor, property owner who has that easement. I don't think that anything's come to a resolution yet. I will note that since we're not changing anything there, you know, I view it a little bit of, you know, what, what's maybe documented on paper and what's in the field. We will work to correct that if we can, but it isn't really on, on this property. It's on the neighbor's property. So if the, the neighbor isn't willing to, you know, make changes, then we're, we're stuck with what it is.
Okay, so, right. So just to clarify then, so if, if no changes are made, then I guess the occupants of the new twins would drive off, drive through the access drive where it is now, which is going across the neighbor's property where there is no easement. And I'm, I'm not a solicitor, so I don't know the ins and outs of how to remedy this, but I just wanted to, just wanted to state that for the record. And then you cleared up for me the situation. I'm sorry, did someone say something? Okay, and you cleared up for me the situation with the proposed decks. We didn't realize that there would be garages. But it's still related to a comment in my letter, comment C, backup area. I suppose even if there are garages, it's possible that somebody could park behind the units. And then you'd have a limited room for the unit at the top of the plans to maneuver and exit the driveway area back onto the access drive. So we just thought we, there should be some consideration given to whether there needs to be any additional area for maneuvering a car. We don't like to pave any more area than we have to, so we understand that, you know, there's, it's kind of a tug and pull situation. And then with trees, there. There is that situation with the access drive going right between two trees. Now, it's an existing situation. Evidently, it has not caused a problem. I'm gathering, but um. With, with a new building and two new units and new occupants. It's possible that you might want to. Put up some reflectors or something like that, or some sort of, some sort of traffic. Uh, reflective signage, just to make. Sure that those trees don't get inadvertently taken out by drivers. Perhaps guests visiting the future property occupants. And with, I'll just run through the rest of my comments and, and then you, you know, if you have any comments. Respond, but uh with landscaping, uh. I realize this is early. This is just a tentative sketch plan, so. This point, I'm just making some suggestions while it's early in the process. But um. I thought perhaps the plan would benefit from some parking screening. Uh, adjacent to the multifamily building. That is on the adjacent. Street, the front side of the adjacent street. Just to screen headlights and soften the view from that building. And I was also curious about tree replacement. Um, I know the engineer mentioned. That with. More plans, um, with the preliminary plan submission, it'll become clear what kind of. Tree removal is being proposed and replacement. But uh, of course, you have to do replacement if more than twenty-five percent are removed. And that's all my comments.
Thanks. Um, yeah, so we will keep talking to the adjacent owner about the, the easement. Clear on, on the decks. Uh, the backup area, I think we could add a little. A little area right here so that lot one could back up a little more. Uh, and I, I'll, I'll discuss with the applicant whether it might be appropriate that in the HOA documents or in the easement agreement that. It might be appropriate to not have cars be permitted to park in the driveway area. That way you won't have that. That problem of someone parking and then having trouble getting in the other spots. And we will review the trees, see if there's any trimming or, or additional. You know, like you said, maybe uh. Reflectors or something to put up in that area. Uh, I think this is the area you were talking about for some additional.
Yes.
Screening, and so we can look further into that at preliminary plan as well, uh, as well as replacement.
Okay, thank you.
One issue that the zoning officer raised was that fireplace. East and west side of the building, they project out. They project over the backyard, that back. And the zoning officer asked verification that these, these backyard places. Chris, can you speak to that?
This, um. I don't know if it's totally clear here on, on this. Architectural elevation, but here's the side view and this shows the. The fireplace and how it projects out just on this floor, not from the foundation below. I think if there was a foundation. Judging at, there'd be two lines here to show it coming out. Uh, but. E- either way, it's a will comply. And if we need to shrink the fireplace to make it fit, then we would, we could do that as well.
Yeah, I'd be curious uh how you, it gets out there on the uh lower right. I, I'd be kind of curious just functionally how that works, just for my own period.
I, I think it's similar, and I don't know, Vince, help me if I, if I need help here, but I think it's similar to like a bay window type. A lot of the fireplaces now are gas inserts, and so they're really just put into the space. Not with necessarily the same, you know, large chimneys that you would have with a. You know, a traditional wood fireplace.
Yeah, that's correct. Okay. Do any planning commissioners have any questions?
Me.
Jim Spear.
Hi. The uh existing building is a, a triplex at the moment? Is that correct? It's a three-unit building?
Yes.
How, do you know how many cars use the back, the back driveway right now in the existing triplex situation?
I couldn't tell you exactly, but that is the uh, there are no driveways up front, so that is the access right now. And there are garages back there as well.
Yeah. Do you think there's maybe one spot per unit or are there two spots per unit or any, you just don't know yet at this point?
I don't know yet. If you look at the, um, if you look at the uh, the outline of the uh existing footprint, you can, you can see the existing. You maybe bring that up?
It looks like there's three garage doors in the rear here.
Okay.
So your, your question is, um, how many, how many uh vehicles are, 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 are going in and out there or? I, I believe they're all, all the vehicles that. Uh, are parked either there or out front, because there is existing parking as well out front.
Okay, okay. So uh, we're really only talking about maybe one additional. Car using this back driveway in terms of volume, right? Probably. From what it looks like here.
Yeah, um, I, I, I couldn't tell you, you know, exactly what, what the daily use would be for people that live there.
Right.
But there's, it's basically one garage per unit is how it's set up right now. So each. Unit has access to one garage.
Yeah.
And it's, they're in there now.
Okay.
Mr. Spear, if you, if you look at this on the existing plan, you could see this driveway. Coming on an angle and kind of right through where this contour is. And so on the proposed plan. That would be on a line. You know, right through here.
Uh huh.
So we are removing some of the driveway that's there. And I did find this aerial quickly where it looks like there was a car parked. In the back and, and just based on what I see here, it looks like you probably could have parked a car in the back there and still had maneuverability.
Yeah.
And so even though they only had three garage doors, uh, my guess is there was a little more capacity for cars here than what's proposed.
Sure. Okay, great. Thanks. Um, so another thing. I just wanted to note, maybe this is more of a note than a question, but you're proposing to subdivide this property into lot widths of. Thirty-two and a half feet width each. The uh, the uh, street parking formula, I realize you're not. Going to be claiming a, an off-street parking space for other of these properties. But at the moment, this block of Sabine requires thirty-two point seven. So uh, if you were to subdivide this property in this way, each of these properties would be short three inches from claiming. From ever in perpetuity being able to claim a street, an off-street parking space. So I know your plan doesn't depend on that. But I just thought I would note it at the moment. Um, because if you move that property line, you'd have a situation where a street parking spot would be available to you. Another thing I, uh. Let's see. So there's a. Tree, um. I appreciate that you're going to try to keep the trees out front, the. But um, if you happen to lose them in the process of construction. Or is there a specific tree plant uh replacement for those two trees? Chris, not just on the property overall.
Yeah, there's, there's not any specific uh proposed plannings at all at this time because we're still in, in tentative sketch, but as we. Get further into the process and we show utilities and grading and everything and we get. If, if we think we're getting to the point where we wouldn't be able to keep those, then we would, we would provide uh. The required replacement trees for that. And I assume it would then be a, a street tree. I know that was one of the other comments. I think that, you know, my guess is the shade tree commission would prefer that we kept the existing beach tree as opposed to. Removing that to put in, you know, two smaller newer street trees.
Sure, that's right. So, um, I'm not sure what the street tree requirement would be for a property of this width. I think. Forty feet is the usual, um. Requirement for a street tree. So I'm, I'm not sure what it is on a twin, but it would be really nice to, to keep the existing trees there. Uh, the last thing I want to just note for the public is that the building that's. Currently here is a multifamily building that's proposed to be taken away and replaced with essentially two single-family houses. And um, that's, it's a. It's um, sort of countered to what's often, uh. So this is, as it exists today, it's a property that can support multifamily housing. And it's being converted into single-family housing. That's, is that an accurate statement?
That's correct. It has enough lot area to, it, it's currently a triplex and it has enough lot area to continue to have a triplex. It's.
Yeah.
The hair short of actually having four units. Um, but that's correct. We're, uh, the proposal is for two.
Okay, thanks very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Jim. Do um, any other planning commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, you're, you're showing two egress wells on the side, both units. What's the purpose for those?
I didn't ask the architect the, the question, but I, I assume it's for access to. The basement so they could get some windows there. Uh, I don't know if they would need to be. You know, an, an egress well that someone could actually climb out of so they could have living space in the basement or not.
That's, that's why I was asking the question as opposed to describing it as a window well.
Dave, I can, I can answer that question. Um, and, and Chris was correct. Uh, it, it is uh, an egress uh. Situation we want to put in there if there, you know, if anybody ever wants to finish the basement or there are people down there. Because the garage is occupied most of the back, so that would be an ideal, uh, you know, situation in case of emergency or fire. As an emergency egress. And uh, secondly, we'd like to bring a little bit more light into the basements as well, natural light.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Jim, you mentioned the uh, street tree requirement and it's, I see it's. One for thirty linear feet in the three B district.
Uh, okay, that's great. Thanks.
Sure.
Any other commit questions from planning commissioners? Okay. There being other. Is there someone trying to, uh? All right, I'm going to. To ask, um, then if someone would like, we, we. We. Is everyone muted? David, mute yourself. Here you are. We used to um, make a recommendation to council this month, or according to the calendar the boroughs gave us, gave us, we can um. Take this into consideration and make a recommendation next month. Does everyone, does anyone feel uh like you need more time or would you all be prepared to make a recommendation to vote on tonight? Would anyone be concerned about that? Would someone like to make a recommendation? About this project?
Is there a reason to wait on this? I, I don't see much.
No, I don't see. One, like to propose a recommendation that we could act on tonight. I don't hear any reasons from anybody to wait, so I'm asking if someone would like to, Jim Cornwell, would you like to make a recommendation?
I recommend that we. Uh, vote to move this project along to the next phase. Meaning that we recommend approval of it at this time.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I will second.
Is there discussion of that? Uh, Jim, would you accept an amendment? That um, we vote to approve it and also to approve waiver that the applicant is requesting. For the. And also that we approve it. I believe that you uh would comply with the. Borough engineer and borough zoning officers' um, comments. So then, is that correct, Chris?
That's correct. We, uh, we'd accept a condition that we have to comply with. All three of the review letters we have from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, the Norbert Zoning Officer and the Norbert Township Engineer. Uh, with the exception of the one comment that requires us, uh, the waiver of four fifty dash twenty-one B.
So Jim, I would. Most quickly create a manure. Motion to approve with the approval of, I mean, the condition that the applicant um complies with all other. Uh, of the uh comments in those three letters. That be all right with you?
All right with me, although I can only hear every other word you were saying, Todd.
Okay. Pull my computer closer. Is everyone, does everyone hear that? The resolution? Okay. Would anyone, um, look, so let's, let's uh take a vote then, all in favor of um. Recommending approval of the tentative sketch plan uh and the waiver that requested. And the condition that the applicant comply with the requests in the three uh review letters, uh, all in favor? Hi? Any opposed? Any staying? Okay, so we will uh write that recommendation up and we will uh pass it along to Borough Council. To Chris and Vince. Thank you very much for coming this evening and for uh walking us through your project.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
See you again soon.
Have a good night.
Okay. Next on our agenda tonight is. The Heritage Action Plan. Um, and to review ordinance that we would um. Like to propose uh to council. As a uh overview of this topic for the public who is uh attending. Or watching on, on the Norbert Civics feed. This is a process that will play out still over, over many months. Uh, there is a. Going to be a discussion, a more general policy-oriented discussion about preservation in Norbert at the Borough Council's workshop on Wednesday. And um, the work we are doing now. Uh, will be forwarded to council for its consideration. Uh, at some point, at which point it then goes through the normal. Forty-five plus day period of review and public hearing uh as well. The, what we will be discussing tonight. Uh, is an ordinance that is mostly about the mechanics of how a, of how uh a historic preservation process in, in uh, in Norbert could work. That is separate from a discussion of what areas of the community this would apply to. May he refer to a map or to which properties within that map this would apply to. That requires um. Uh, separate consideration and a great deal of research and documentation before that can be completed. So today it's sort of like an operating system that, that we will be discussing. And then, and then in future meetings, we'll be talking more about. About the uh, the, the, the idea of where, where in Norbert uh this should apply. So. And I should also uh say that um, this process. Occurs within the context of um, a state enabling law. Which does provide some guidance and boundaries and requirements for how this process works, what an ordinance has to include. And ultimately, uh, how a map is drawn. And how resources are identified so that they can actually, you know, comply with the intent. and how resources are identified so that they can actually, you know, comply with the intent of the of the state law. And that is a process that we are being supported with from the state Historic Museum Commission as well as the Lower Merion Conservancy. They are advising us on how to do this in a way that accurately reflects Norbert's needs, its historic context, as well as the requirements of of the state law. And any ordinances we we pass in Norbert do need to be reviewed and approved at the state level as well. And that is that is a process that will go on for many months. So today, and I should also mention to members of the public, there are a number of meetings in the past, including January, the meeting, the meeting whose minutes we just we just approved, many meetings in twenty nineteen where these issues were discussed at the Planning Commission. There is a report Heritage Action Plan Recommendations that was commissioned by the borough and received, I think, in September or October of twenty nineteen. And a subsequent report from the Planning Commission in January of twenty twenty sort of outlined our own interpretations of the needs and priorities in in Norbert. So there's a lot of information available that's been generated over the last several years as to this this initiative. And anyone who wants to learn more about about that, I'd encourage you to go look those up. All of the resources I've just mentioned are available on the borough's webpage. If you look at the records of the of the planning commission meetings over the last couple of years. Today, we also have, aside from Chloe, who introduced herself earlier and who has been helping us with this ordinance, we are happy to have Kathleen Ablin out with us this evening. She is the Director of Preservation at the Lower Merion Conservancy. One of the people who I mentioned a minute ago has been guiding us on this process. Two of our commissioners, Heidi Boys and David Brower, have been taking lead in working with Kathleen and working with Chloe, working with Corey Kegarisi from the state and working with the borough staff to kind of figure out exactly how to create an ordinance that encapsulates requirements that the state has, but also is reflective of of our unique needs. And so what I'd like to do is walk through a draft of of the ordinance. And there are a few, my goal today is to really give Kathleen to give Chloe to give Dave and Heidi feedback they need to keep working on this ordinance so that we might have a close to final draft that we can then share with council and share more broadly for for public discussion. So. I think that there are a number of small issues in this ordinance that might require a little bit of feedback, but I but I think the core issue to discuss and Dave and Heidi, I didn't, we talked about this a little this morning, but I realized we didn't talk about directly. But it really is the in the in the draft that you gave us on page ten and eleven. There is a chart that talks about what activity and what action would require review under a historic preservation ordinance for Norbert. And I think that that's an important place to start our our conversation today. And then there's a few, I think another important thing to talk about is with with Chloe in particular is to help us understand what a timeline would be. If we wanted to advance this, what would we aim for in terms of developing things to give to council for its consideration? I'm also mindful that when we discussed this in January, we we put a there were a couple of policy oriented questions that came up and we promised to to discuss them later. One had to do with why this and why now? What's the urgency of of this? And the second has to do with whether there are any kind of unintentional impacts of this work that we're doing or of preservation that might unintentional impacts from inequity or fair treatment of of people point of view. Is are there certain people who might be unfairly disadvantaged by the review processes that that we're talking about? So Jim raised those questions and that's really the best place to start. If we could talk about that, what I'd like is for Jim, if you if there are any questions still that you'd like to kind of put on the table, this would be a great time for you to bring them back to us because we promised that we would talk about them. And maybe we'll just go around once and have everyone comment on them and see where we land. And then and then we can move back to talking about about the ordinance. So Jim, I'll ask you, what are the issues you still think you'd like to make sure we?
I just think that we want to be careful about where we draw the line between what's mandated by historical review process and what might be put in the bin of advisory. I I think there's fairly good consensus around, you know, mandatory review of of demolitions and probably around changing historically important features of houses like porches and turrets and so forth. But then there's sort of a gray area about how, what are we going to focus on for historical review when it comes to sort of more run of the mill renovations that may or may not include the facade? So that's where I feel like the 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 gray area is where we want to try to define that line. What constitutes a reviewable, a mandatory reviewable renovation? Because I I would hate for people to be hamstrung in what they're able to do to their own property, you know, overly. Say if like if I have a house that doesn't have a turret or doesn't have a porch or doesn't have a any other historical redeeming significant feature. I perhaps I would want to make the argument that I should not be subject to a mandatory review process. That's all that that's all I'm saying. That's there's a that's where I would say that questions are for me.
Okay, well, Jim, I think that that question overlaps very much with the part of this draft ordinance that I'm suggesting we hone in on today. Do you have that ordinance? Does everyone have? Called it up so everyone could look at it. Does anyone not have access to that?
Can you tell me when you sent it and I'll pull it up?
I honestly, I don't remember. I even I even think it, I'm not sure if it came from me or if it came from from Heidi or Dave or Chloe. I will, I will try to pull it up.
Is there a way you could mail it out really quickly and I'll and I'll stay on the meeting and print it print out another copy just so I'm sure I'm following the right thing?
Sure. Jim Cornwell, Dave or Heidi, do any of you need?
I I sent it only to you, Todd. I I mean, I Dave and I have it obviously, but I didn't send it to Jim Cornwell or Jim Spear. So maybe could you put it on your screen?
Yeah, I think that would be easier.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just need to find it here. So Heidi, I have one that's draft ordinance, February twenty twenty one. That's what I'm going to open, okay?
Is that right, Chloe? Okay, yeah, should be.
Okay.
Can you all see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
And then as I scroll through.
There's a Word document with track changes that might also be useful. I mean, maybe not necessary for sharing, but it has some of the questions that we have to answer in the comments. But this is good in terms of reviewing this.
Some of the key ones. So for those of you who are looking at this screen, this is a section of the ordinance that discusses what types of actions would would be reviewable in in those areas of the borough that are designated as historic areas. And the the way this approach works generally is that within the borough, certain areas of the borough are are mapped or designated as as historic areas. And they are considered as such because there is a kind of a compelling coherent narrative about those areas reflecting the architecture, kind of the era in which they were built, some kind of common connection among them where the whole is sort of more than the sum of the parts. Within those areas, each building is evaluated and is is determined whether does a contributing resource, that is, that building actually contributes to this narrative, this 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 statement of significance or it's non contributing. It really is from a different time or it's been transformed in such a way that it really no longer helps people see that that story about the borough's development. So different rules can apply to things that are contributing or non contributing. And so part of what we're going to discuss today, go down this list and look at is what kinds of actions should be reviewed when there are when it whether a resource is contributing or whether it is non contributing. One of the things I'll say to preface this conversation is this is a topic that the planning commission has actually discussed pretty extensively already, but not to this level of detail. And I think and as a a general kind of parameter, the planning commission has said in its reports to council that the most important things to focus on are demolition, new construction, major alterations and additions. And in its past reports to council, the planning commission has recommended avoidance of, you know, review of small details that are more about repairs and upgrades and it's it's more the major actions that that from a policy point of view, the planning commission has argued merit the most attention. So I ask everyone to keep that in mind because I think that's what we have been communicating to the public. So I guess what I'd like to ask is if we can go down this list, if there's any way we can do this efficiently and kind of, I don't know, hopefully this consensus on a lot of things, we don't need to debate them. But ask, are are these the kinds of activities that we would expect to review for contributing resource? And would we expect to review them for non contributing resource? Does anyone on the planning commission have any questions about that? Okay, so my goodness. My eyes, changing a building's footprint, including the addition or removal of building volume in a contributing resource. Would that be an action that would require review? Changing its height, including the addition or demolition of whole or partial stories. Adding or removing turrets, towers or spires. Changing its roof line. So those are all those are kind of categories of things about the massing of the building. Those come under the and so those seem to me to be potentially things you might consider as major alterations. So let's talk about those. Are those kinds of things you would expect to want to review or or are some of them and and not others? Jim, do they seem to cross the line that you're hoping we don't cross?
Well, I mean, is there a distinction being made as to whether these are on the frontage or the rear? Or, you know, I think that makes a difference.
Chloe, can you address that?
Yes, so the way the ordinance is written is that only the only things that can be reviewed are those that can be viewed from the public way. And we it's worth having a little conversation about whether you want to include. I don't think Norbert has a ton of these, but like alleys and backdrives that are sort of semi public, whether those would be considered the public way. But overall, it's from from the street, from the sidewalk, only things that can be seen from the street, the sidewalk. So that's that's what we're discussing here. If it's out of you, it's not going to be reviewed as part of this ordinance.
Anyone any objection to those things being what?
So this is sorry, on the screen, it's too small for me to read quickly. Yeah, that's better.
I think I get the whole thing on. He made me lose it now. A little better. So these massing beyond a little more fine grained with the zoning might might. Obviously, if they if there are an alteration of this sort, it would have to be checked for zoning compliance. But assuming it all complied with the zoning, would there be would there also be a desire to review these things?
Changing a building, what does it mean to change a building's footprint or volume, but only a scene from the public? Public sidewalk?
If someone wanted to widen their building, make an addition to make it wider.
Would that be?
Jim, this building that is being proposed for additions at on price, one oh six price, when I mentioned at a at the zoning hearing board.
Yeah.
Interested in 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 adding a volume, taking down a a separate garage and adding a garage to the to the bulk of the building. It's one of the things they'd like to do. It's visible from the street. It's it's barely compliant with the code. They need a slight variance, like for a foot. So the question is, would the ADA assuming they can do it in a way it's compliant with the zoning, is that something that would be reviewed? That is changing a building's footprint is adding volume. The opposite thing would be what if some, you know, the opposite would be if someone wanted to cut a building in half and tear half of it down. I don't know why, but that's that's what this means.
Well. I guess that's hard. That's hard to say. I mean, the we the way we currently think of facade buildout is, you know, if it's if it's on the frontage line within six feet. But anything further back than six feet is not on the facade, so.
That's just for a measurement purpose.
Yeah.
We also have rules about the front lot layer and so forth.
Yeah.
In one way, invisible from the street is one thing. Another thing could be it's only in the first or second lot layer. That could be a way of looking at it as well. Tell you what, to move along, I guess, I guess maybe maybe it would be, would it be possible to simply say we either totally disagree or are on the fence so that we can kind of if we if we dwell fifteen minutes on each of these, we won't get very far.
Right.
So. Is anybody on the fence about any of these four? They all seem to me to be kind of near in a way.
The I mean, the only one I'd be on the fence about is the first one, changing the footprint and and massing of volume, just because I think once you get back in the second lot layer, you know, past the facade, it shouldn't matter that much.
Okay. Okay. So the note would be, Jim, maybe the first should only be first or second lot layer. Third lot layer. Because remember, the second lot layer begins at the frontage line.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Maybe it's the first.
Can I just mention that I know you're all aware of this, but a review doesn't necessarily mean denial and you can put in the design guidelines, you know, if it's beyond the first lot layer, it should be generally approved unless, and you know, put in some specific criteria that might make it egregious or something. So you can have, you know, an extra layer of review is an extra thing that the property owner has to go through, but you don't have to, you can write it such that those reviews would go easier in certain conditions based on the design guidelines.
Oh, okay. Now this is different. Okay. So you're saying that these these features might be subject to review, but not necessarily mandatory denial.
Right. Oh, yeah. No, I think in many cases they would be approved. It would just be that they would be reviewed. And then they would have issue a recommendation to council to approve or deny the request from the property owner. It's just a layer of review. Yeah.
Okay, I'd be comfortable with layer of review then. Yeah.
On the next.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna take the next one singly, removing or concealing brackets, corbels, cornices or decorative roof treatments. Is that a issue that, again, thinking of it where we started, major alterations, additions, new construction? Is this, is this a item we would want to review?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Adding or removing or closing portages, corticoes or stoops.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Changing the size, shape or configuration of porches, removing porch roofs. Adding, okay, let's say the next two, changing the configuration of porches, corticoes or stoops, removing porch roofs. It's kind of just sort of redesigning a porch.
Removing porch roofs. You mean just to make it like a deck of some kind or?
I don't know. Or.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd say yes.
I'm just gonna keep scooting down unless adding, altering, removing, concealing porch columns, adding, altering, removing, concealing porch railings, adding, altering, removing, concealing porch brackets, trim, decorative elements. That's basically the next level of detail almost.
Yeah, I just want to say that Dave Brower and I already went through this much lengthier list and pared it down to these elements. And I also think we need to just maybe have something in there about these elements being original to the building. Because somebody may have added something onto a building later that it would be appropriate to remove, but it's still going to go through that check, checking process. It's just simply an extra step as Chloe described.
Let me ask Kathleen, if you don't mind, Jim, something Heidi said I think should be followed up on, which is you said original to the building. That's what, if it were original to the building, it would deserve scrutiny. I assume you mean if it was not original, it would not. So Chloe and Kathleen, is that actually common to make that distinction in a code like this? Is it feasible to make that distinction?
Todd, this is Kathleen.
Evening.
Hi, Todd. Hold on just a second. Hi, everyone. Well, what I would say would be generally if you have a contributing resource, it falls within a period of significance. And the assumption is that if it's contributing, then it has a level of integrity that would justify its designation as contributing. In other words, it can convey its significance. So normally it would be up to the review body or staff, if there's administrative review, to, you know, sort of make those determinations. In some cases, it's pretty obvious that it's an historic feature. In other cases, it's not, and that's where the discussion occurs. But I am, it's not black and white.
I could give you an example of a masonry facade where a window or a door was taken out and filled in with block and somebody wants to remove the block and put the door back in. So that could be a staff level decision that, yeah, that's fine. Go for it because they're basically taking it back to where it was originally.
Right. And I think that if you're concerned about some of these things, you probably want to include them here at this, you know, flag it for review and then write up in a separate document, some more specific detailed guidelines for each one of these saying, you know, here's our intention. If it, and like Kathleen said, rather than original to the building, the phrase is often used relevant to or originating from the period of historical significance. Because every once in a while, we get a property where something was added after the original building was built and becomes significant over time. But in generally, that means referred to the original. So you could write that into the design guidelines and have some details of what kind of factors might go into determining that if it's not readily available. You know, if you don't have a photograph from the original building or something. So that's where the design guidelines come in. Are another step in this whole process that would occur after, after the district gets approved by the state historic preservation office. That would have specific guidelines for how these reviews are conducted and how the decisions are made in the review.
That said, we are asking about porch columns, porch railings, porch brackets, adding, altering, removing. Are those kind of details that are something we would like to scrutinize or those? Anyone object to having those on the list? Remember, this is important. I know, getting in these conversations, it's easy to say yes, but I also have to, you know, Jim made some very strong comments at the beginning about the kind of burdens this places on homeowners. It's also a burden at places on staff and council. And I think, you know, if you remember, our, you know, the beginning point of this discussion is that we are worried about the kind of major rifts in the fabric that are caused when there's the wholesale demolition and replacement of houses. And so one of the things I want to caution about is sort of going down this list and saying, oh yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great, that'd be great, but kind of balancing that against what, you know, we've established as our purpose and what we think the public would reasonably accept, like council could accept, et cetera. So it's not, it's not just a question of, yeah, that's important to the fabric, but is that part of what we should have a process about, given what our policy concerns are and given what we kind of understand about our community?
Well, what I'm seeing is that a lot of these, I feel, are worthy of review, but I think there probably has to be another pass at this list to determine whether, you know, any of these things would really sink an application, you know, or whether they would just become advisory at some point.
Well, I don't want to keep going over the list though. The question is, are these things that there should be a review process for? Not an advisory process, not like, come on, it's about how to do this. But like, are these things should require a process that requires approval? Now, Corey and Chloe will say, and I'm sure Kathleen, that the system should be set up to help people get approval. The point is not stop things, but the point is to have, provide guidance for people to do things. And that's why guidelines are there. But nevertheless, it is a process and, you know, all of these certificates go through a board and they all ultimately go to council. So I just ask you to kind of keep that in mind. Because one day we will have to be able, we'll be called on to explain this to people. And so we have to kind of make sure that the things we're talking about are consistent with the purposes we set out at the beginning. The, should we keep going down the list? Does anyone want to comment on those things, columns, railings?
Todd, if I may make a comment. Am I muted or not?
We hear you.
Okay. It seems to me that these are all features of buildings that singly and jointly add character to the building in question. You could have a practically infinite list of items like these. But these are characteristics, these are characteristics that define the quality of a given facade. And if you start eliminating them, like bay windows, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the list and reading off of it, shutters and shutter hardware, if you take the shutters off of a facade, it alters it tremendously. Some facades are fine without shutters, but generally the historic facade that has shutters needs to continue to have them in order to be reflective of its time period. So I don't find anything on this list, having read it now completely, that is inappropriate, to be honest with us. It's a question of how detailed do you want the list to be and should some of these things be described in more general terms?
Jim, I think that is a good point. I should add that when the state created this list, it was done with the intent to lessen confusion about what is important and what is not important on a historic building. Oftentimes you'll see in a historic preservation ordinance, the regulation of character defining features on a building. And description is limited to that. So it's up to the review board or to staff to determine what a character defining feature of a building is. And I don't want to speak for Corey because he created this. But I think that that was generally the intent was to provide some more guidance about what it is that you're looking to regulate. Or give some more specificity to it.
The only thing I see that I would maybe eliminate was the, was the item of about the ATM or other banking related features. I don't quite understand why that's on there. Because, you know, you take away an ATM and we're all up the creek.
Well, it's only a review though. You know, if somebody wants to put an ATM in front of their building, maybe you want to guide them as to details about that.
Right.
And I think that's exactly the point, Heidi, that it's a review.
I see things here like painting ceiling coating, masonry surfaces. I understand why something like that can be important to the historic character of an area. In my life managing mural projects, I run into this all the time. But I think when we've discussed this, we've been pretty clear that we weren't talking about telling people how to paint their buildings. So I do feel like some of these might be what we have, while you can make an argument why they're important, there's also, you know, kind of thresholds of review that 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 our community might be willing or not willing to accept. You know, I think painting, for example, is one where we've sort of said, you know, in the past, we've said, that's just not something we want to get into. I would say the same about applying stucco.
Well, doesn't it depend, Todd, on whether you're obscuring an existing surface by doing that? An example on Forest Avenue comes to mind. Building was was mindlessly stuccoed. Brick masonry, I think we're all remembering which one this was. And it should never have been done. It was done with the false, under the false idea that it was going to improve the waterproofness of the facade. And that's, that's false. And it resulted in an extremely ugly building sitting there, you know, for the rest of my natural life on Forest Avenue. So there's, there's an obscuring of an existing surface that was unfortunate.
Well, that's true. We've, I think we've together that building, if I'm not mistaken, or looked at pictures of it. But I'm wondering if that's really the intent of what we set out to do here at the beginning. It's like to perfect the appearance of everything.
This isn't, this isn't about appearance necessarily even, it's about durability too. As Jim Cornell just said, you know, it's an advisor, it's advice not to. If you aren't aware of the predicament you might be in if you do these things. And it's not about color, it's not about, it's not about that. It's about function. In addition to hiding perhaps beautiful brick details that were on the building that will, you'll know, that will be lost.
Right. But sort of what this implies is that if you want to paint or coat a masonry surface, I don't know, it implies to me that like we probably don't need that idea. And so you're gonna get and, you know, I would, I would read this as saying I probably shouldn't do that. So and in certain contexts, that may be the most appropriate thing to do. But I'm asking whether, even though we may have a preference for people to paint, seal or coat their buildings in certain ways, is that what we think the public is signing up for? And is, you know, is that really, can you draw a line between what we is our concern about demolitions and teardowns, which is what I hear from council about? And, you know, applying stucco. As much as it may not be appropriate, some of us may not like it, is that really what we think our community is signing up for?
Yeah, I really, I'm really uncomfortable with, I mean, a lot of these things are deserving of review or scrutiny, but I think not many of them are grounds for denial of a permit. Like, and I can't imagine that that residents are going to be happy about this or that, that, you know, if we make, if we make these too stringent, I don't, you know, I can't imagine they're going to have much of a life being passed on council either, you know. I kind of feel like we should stick with the original, you know, the original intent, like you were saying, demolitions, removal of very major architectural features as potentially being grounds for denial of a permit. But a lot of these other things, I'm sorry, I just, you know, I don't think they're going to fly. I mean, if I'm, if I'm going to alter my porch and there's some detail on my porch that I'm not aware of, you know, I might want to hear about it, reconsider it. But I don't know if that should, that should be grounds for denial of my permit.
Well, that would be enough, Jim. If you, if you heard about it, if you were, and you were advised against it for logical and supportable reasons, that would be, that would be doing the public a service, I think.
Yes, absolutely. And I would, I would welcome that. And that's what I think maybe we should think about these levels of review.
Right. I think one of the flow charts has all kind of bifurcated into things which require a certificate, things that don't require a certificate, but there's sort of an advisory.
Yeah.
That's true, yeah.
On them, and that, that may be a
Yep.
I'm just concerned about getting ahead of public sentiment, I really am. Because if we get too far ahead of public sentiment, we're not going to be able to get support.
I think that's, that's the gist of a lot of, of one of the conversation. And at least for me, the thought process is, is it's a political question? Then, then maybe a preservation question. It's, you know, what's, what's politically something that's, that's, you know, something that council can support? I mean, I, you know, and I've said this all along, I'm, by nature, I'm more of a preservationist. I would have a mug, probably if it was left, if I was God, it would be a much more onerous list. But I understand where we are. And it comes back to the original question of how did this thing get started? Well, it was to, you know, react to the, you know, spate of demolitions that are going on. That doesn't mean that some issues are important and shouldn't be reviewed and at least provide some kind of a, you know, expert feedback to the homeowner. But I think ultimately I, I have to reluctantly concede that at the end, it's a political question of what's it going to take to get it through council?
Right, and I, I can, I think that bifurcation between what things do you review? A review which things do we propose an advisory view for? So, you know, your, your proposal is, you have comments, but, but they're advisory only. They're not, they don't lead to a certificate that a HARB or that a council has to approve. I think that's a good bifurcation line.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I've, I've always said it would be great if there were some carrots too, like, like a revolving loan fund or mini grants or things for people who agree to comply with the advisory review. But I don't, I don't think that is something that is part of this ordinance. So I guess then the question is more like, is it, it's not about whether, it's more about, is this something that you feel so strongly about that someone would really need to get a certificate to approve it? Or is this, since we feel, we, we all feel strongly about all these things, is it then just something that would be an advisory topic? Or, you know, we go the path of just getting advisory guidance and not necessarily a certificate of appropriateness? Would be the bifurcating line?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about that at length. And that's definitely a, a two tiered crossmuscle. If it requires a certificate of appropriateness or not.
Right. So some things would require a certificate for appropriateness and others would just require?
Advice.
Advice.
Recommendations, yeah.
So I guess then the question is, which of these things on which side of that line? Maybe what I would ask is, can everyone give it a quick look and identify things you think you can live with as being advisory? Or which things you think are so important in the spirit of where we started with this that, you know, then tear down the construction major that you feel they do require?
Could I suggest maybe we do this as homework? Like, I would really like to, you know.
I'd be happy to. We now, a year ago, we did give this homework out. And the reaction from our commission was, we don't, we know what we want, we don't need to fill out forms.
Oh, stop it.
Now I want to fill out the form.
Now we have it in front of us, it's easy.
Yeah.
Happily suggest that as a way around this, but I also am mindful of the time that we have to move. But if that is a way to move this along, then I'm happy.
Well, since I'm probably going to get kicked off of this commission within, you know, within days, I will be certain to return my form within a day or two.
Is that okay with everyone else that we, that one?
I like that idea.
What is advisory and what is, what requires a certificate from this list? I, there are a couple of other things I wanted to touch on in this topic. And I'm going to try and go through them really quickly. So that maybe we can get on to our other agenda items. So this ordinance, again, which is a, a, a kind of a model ordinance, so to speak, that, that Corey has given us to adapt to our purposes, recommends that, once this ordinance is passed, that the Borough Council appoint a, a preservation study committee, then look at the map and would look at the, the the inventory of things which are contributing or non-contributing within that map. And it, there is an option for that, for that committee to be the planning commission, or it could be an independent committee. And so I wanted, if planning commissioners felt that as a task you felt we could take on to oversee the development of the map and the kind of more rigorous look at what's conforming and non-conforming on that map? Or would you prefer that turned over to another committee that's formed for that purpose? Anyone have any thoughts about that?
I think for the time being, Todd, the planning commission should, should usher this project along. Whether in the end, there is a, a, a purpose, a, a purpose made body to administer it is another question.
Well, what other thoughts do people have?
Well, that's what I thought.
Dave, is that all right with you? We will be the four peoples.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
As to your, you about the purpose built commission, that's the next set of questions. Now, we can call this, there, there does need to be a, an entity that oversees the review of applications and the recommendation about certificate appropriateness. This committee, as Corey, I think everyone who's advising us has pointed out, could also have other duties related to preservation, not just, you know, the review of applications. It could do education, promotion, research, recommend other kinds of policies related to financial incentives. It could be one stop shop for the borough's preservation policies. But its core function at this point would be to look at these applications. So we can name it what we want, though. But also, I believe some of the composition of this entity is, is dictated by state law, particularly the architect, real estate broker, and building inspector, I believe, are required by state law to be on this group. And I guess there's flexibility for the others. Is that correct, Kathleen or Chloe, as to what the state requires and what we have flexibility on?
That's right. Right, a minimum of five members, but there's no maximum, and it must include those three that you mentioned, yes.
So one question is whether we would want a planning commissioner to be on this, on this commission, on this entity, cross, you know, cross-appointed? Another question is, do we feel to compose a committee of this nature solely with residents of Narberth? Or would we be open to others, particularly the professional members, the architect, real estate broker, and building inspector, not being from Narberth?
I think by, maybe by necessity, that's, I know sometimes there's a crunch to find specific people with specific qualifications. So, I mean, I would be open to opening it to people outside of Narberth.
Well, especially since Kevin would probably be the building inspector.
I don't know if he could be on the, you know, so be the building, building officials. Could that, could, could a person fill, fill those dual roles?
Yes. And that's, that's actually somewhat common because sometimes it seems to be hard to find a building inspector.
So we could actually have the most building inspector play that role. And we have brokers galore in Narberth and architects in good standing here in Narberth. So maybe we don't
And not so good standing.
Truth comes out. So maybe, maybe looking, but the reference would be for people in Narberth. Okay. Another question. I had
Sorry, just
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Corey.
To clarify, did we get, did we make decisions on any of these? Do we want it to be a five-member committee? Or allow it to be up to a certain number of members greater than that? And do you want to fill in this, no less than blank members shall be residents?
Here's what I propose. Minimum of five members. I'm not sure we need to say a maximum. I guess council can decide that. And that it should be residents of Narberth, except that the architect, broker, or inspector could be not a resident if the council found that necessary. I don't see any reason why any commission member or another person who knows about history in architecture shouldn't be a resident of Narberth. I would only consider an outsider for someone, not someone not from Narberth, for one of those statutory type positions.
All right, I agree with that.
Does that work?
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. And do you want to require that one member should be a planning commission member or not? What do you think?
Let's, let's, I would recommend requiring it, let council debate that.
Okay. We're reading it in that way, this isn't the final.
I think there's so much overlap with the code that, that there should be a planning commission member on.
Great, thank you, sorry, you can move on. I just want to clarify what changes we were making here.
A big question, Chloe, that, that you raised on down here. Page 12, but in this version, page 13, my printout's different from my screen here. And considering whether certificate appropriateness, it's at the bottom, for alterations to non-contributing resources, the HARB and Borough Council should No, this is a big question, maybe one we have to ask you to consider when you're filling out your form. But remember, in each historic area or in the historic district area, there are both contributing and non-contributing resources. Contributing resources are those buildings essentially that we learn in Laramie and they could be street signs and features like masonry walls and so forth. So those features that contribute to the, that contribute to the history, the, the that adds up to what we are trying to preserve. But obviously within those areas, there are exceptions. Those are, there are, there are features that come from a totally different era or have been altered so much that they don't contribute anymore. And those are what are called non-contributing features. Question for us is, would we seek to have a kind of review, whether it's the requirement of a permit or of a certificate of appropriateness or even an advisory view for thing, for, for resources or features that are not contributing? Or are those just get a free pass? And remember, we're also talking about the same kind of features that we were just talking about on the list before. So would non-contributing resources be reviewed at all?
What would be an example of that?
Well, the house that we just reviewed on Sabine Avenue would probably be a non-contributing feature because it looks like a 1970s or 60s colonial style house that you would find in a Levittown.
Right.
That would be a non-contributing feature. And so if someone wanted to say, yeah, we want to build an addition to that house that you can see from the front, would you, would you say, yeah, we, we should, or would you say, nah, that's a non-contributing feature? Now, remember, under new construction, because since they're providing new, building new construction, it would be reviewed. New construction would be reviewed. They would also have the demolition permit, a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition. Non-contributing feature, I guess they wouldn't have. But for the new construction, it would be reviewed.
So if, if you have a 1970s nondescript house and you want to add to it, we're, we're at, considering whether we want that new construction to be subject to a historical review such that an addition might look historically appropriate, but the house looks like run-of-the-mill nothingness? Or is that, was that sort of the question?
What I want to think about this, Jim, is reviewing, if you choose to review a non-contributing resource, it would be primarily to regulate the impact that that change on the non-contributing resource would have on the neighboring contributing resources. So you're really not as concerned or really concerned at all about the impact of the change on itself, on the non-contributing resources. You're thinking about how they'll impact the, the neighboring resources that are contributing.
Yeah, the, the, the one that I think about came up several years ago, I remember. And I don't know if it ever was just a rumor or whether there was some reality to it, that there was talk about adding decorative elements to the commercial buildings on the south side of Havreford Avenue, which would certainly be non-contributing, you know, just the one story stores. But adding, you know, for the sake of argument, a whole lot of Victorian trim on those would certainly change the character of the street and have an impact on the contributing resources on the other side of the street. So how do we feel about that?
Well, I'm going to pull us back up to where we started, which is, you know, we're, we're thinking about major changes like demolitions, major additions.
I, I understand, but, I mean, in the context of this discussion, that was the example I, I thought of the other day.
But so in that, that example, I would say is, is not, as much as, it, it's like the conversation before. It would be fine if there was some sort of advisory process, just say, here's some options, would you consider these options? But I, I can't say, I, I think it would take a lot more work to manage Havreford Avenue at that level of detail. A lot more work with the business association to, to make sure there's, there's broad acceptance that that, that that would be, that that would be desirable.
Yeah, it seems like that kind of review could intrude on signage, business signage, and things like that. It's, I'm not sure if that's appropriate.
I honestly just don't get any sense that council will be willing to go there.
Yeah.
That particular example. So.
Well, we've already done that on Havreford Avenue. We, we have limited the, the size and location of signage. And we have accepted the fact that there is a wide diversity of, of signage types and facade types that is not only acceptable, but is encouraged along Havreford Avenue. By virtue of not regulating it, we've encouraged diversity, and that's a good thing, I think. I think we agreed that was a good thing.
We did.
Can I just go to the big picture here for just a second? I would say the most common reason that I've seen that people might want to regulate a non-contributing resource is if it has the potential to block the view of a contributing resources. So if there's a, you know, historic property that's set back a little further from the street and someone wants to put an addition on a non-contributing resource that's closer to the street and that addition might make it harder to see the contributing resource from a public way. I don't know that that's going to be so much of an issue in Narberth, but I would say that's one of the, the more common situations in which people say, yeah, well, maybe we should look at additions to non-contributing resources just to make sure they're not going to block the contributing resource.
So why don't we ask everyone to look at it? So why don't we ask everyone to look at it, that column as well, as you do here, Simon, from that, I think that was a good. I think Chloe, you provided a little, you know, as to what Kathleen was hinting at about its impact, so. But that is a, that's the thing we need to make sure we, we look at. And then the last thing I have in my notes is make sure that all the process steps that talk about how this relates to building codes and building permits. I know you've talked to Matt West in the office, but it's also important to review this all with Kevin Walsh and make sure that administratively, you know, this, this is a very detailed, I in my own world, when I write ordinances for the work I do for communities, I do not like to write administrative process into ordinances because you can easily hamstring yourself if you just make one misstep in your administrative process, your whole review could be thrown out, you know, for someone who says, well, you didn't follow your process. So so I, I guess what I would, the first thing I want to do is make sure that what we do have in an ordinance is consistent with the way the borough operates now. And there's no kind of unintended conflicts with other codes or other timeframes or other, other processes that occur. I will, I will take my cues from the professionals in this field, which is not my field, that this level of detail is warranted. And I'm sure our solicitor will look at that as well. So my main concern is not that it's too detailed, but to make sure the detail is correct. And I think if you all can, who are working on this can review it with Kevin Walsh. That would be, that would be good. And that's, those are, those are the corrections I have. Chloe, is there anything else that you feel like you need feedback on tonight to keep working on this?
And I, to the only other kind of big issue that might need discussion is about new construction, whether you want to include historic review of new construction, considering the form-based code already ensures some level of continuity with the surrounding properties.
I think that's, that's, that's been a goal. What do other people think?
Yeah, I think we're covered with the form zoning code.
I think that was the purpose of the form.
Yeah. What do we have a zoning code for, really? If not, at some point, we won't need the zoning code. Everything's up, yeah.
I was saying we do want to, you guys saying we don't need to? Is that what you guys are?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're saying that.
You guys are the folks who want to look at the architectural drawings for each. So I'm surprised.
I'm glad I raised the issue because I don't think there's consensus here.
Jim, I'm going to weigh in with your, with your solomonic sort of overview on this. We always want to see the architect. I'm very surprised to hear you say we don't, you know, someone needs to have their architectural designs reviewed for new construction.
Who, who are you talking to?
Who are you?
Well, when I've been interested in seeing new construction drawings there to see whether they truly are following the zoning code or whether there's something that's been missed or whether there's something in the zoning code we haven't thought of that should be corrected for next time, you know, and those are, those kind of reviews for me personally have proved valuable. And I think have had, had actual results. So, um, I, yeah. Uh, that's why I look at new construction drawings.
The other thing you might want to consider is whether your design guidelines are consistent with or, or match whatever you have in your zoning code.
Well, yes, we do. We will need to. Because particularly for building, a lot of facade, you know, guidelines or, or requirements in the zoning code. Well, it sounds like I'm the, the minority, if not the odd person out here. So I guess you've got your answer, Chloe.
Okay.
Okay, I, in the interest of time, want to, we will to move to the end item, but I, the last thing I want to discuss very quickly is to sort of get a sense of, of timeline here. So one of the options that, that Kath, well, it was Maggie actually put it out to us in our January meeting was to submit a ordinance and a map at the same time to PHMC. Submit them separately. What was the date, Chloe? We, or Corey came up with a date?
May 10th, he was saying that it would have to be an, I was not part of that conversation with Maggie. The impression I got from her was about whether you wanted to try to adopt the ordinance and then the district boundaries separately or together. Not, I think PHMC is going to require them all to be submitted together.
Yeah, okay.
But I can clarify that.
It's very unreasonable to think we can have this ready in two months, especially because council needs 45 days at least, you know, to advertise an ordinance before it votes on it. So I just, I don't, so I think we really are shooting for the September uh, meeting. But I think what that means is we do need to move along and wrap up this conversation about what things in contributing and non-contributing resources are. I would love if everyone could get your comments or thoughts to that to Chloe really in about a week so that we can come back with a final draft of this next month. Otherwise, this is just going to linger on, you know, and we don't want to, you know, it will be enough time spent at council talking about this with the public. So I don't want us to be the, the delay here. And then I think next month, if we're fortunate, we can focus our conversation more on our, our philosophy about the map and the era of significance and what that kind of means in terms of what areas of the borough are covered by this, so that we can get to work on that map and determining what the informing a non, giving a non-contributing uses are. And then we can, how they would like to handle the ordinance that we've prepared.
Uh, in what form would you like those comments made? Should we just mark up a copy of the document we were just looking at?
I can, I can send something out tonight for you to mark up.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thanks, everyone, for your work on this. It's going to require a lot more time and a lot more discussion. But um hopefully it will, it will bear fruit. So thank you. And thanks, Kathleen. Thanks so much for spending time with us in Norbert.
Thanks, Todd. Happy to be here.
You went. Um, so we'll move on to our next item, which is new business. And I'm sorry to keep our guests waiting. Hopefully you've had a good time listening to the conversation. We have two topics. One is talking about green buildings, green, and options for Norbert. And the other is to talk about a proposed revision to the multi-family house type. So let's talk about green buildings first, since we have folks with us who've been waiting. And I would like to welcome Louise Guedliano and Jean De Sabatino, who, I said your names correctly, who contacted me the other day and said, hey, can we talk to you about this? I said, let's have, let's have a meeting, let's have a conversation with the planning commission. Uh, so that everyone can hear what you are working on and so that this can be a public conversation. So I welcome you here. Again, apologies for making you wait. I appreciate that you reached out to us. And we are very eager to hear your ideas for green construction in Norbert and how that might interact with what we do here in, in our zoning code. So take it away.
Well, thanks for having us. Jean and I wanted to talk to you tonight about building green or green building codes because we're in phase four of the implementation plan of the CAP, on the five milestones. So it seems like if we're in implementation phase and we heard you guys talking so much tonight about new, new construction and stuff, so it's, seems timing wise right. We sent us three-page paper to Todd focused on the issue of buildings, the buildings in the greenhouse gas emissions issues. Green, as you know, buildings are 40% of greenhouse gas emissions. And there are communities that are all around us that are way ahead of us in adopting Greenpoint's plans that give developers incentives for using recycled materials, insulation, heat pumps, any energy store equipment, water conservation, EV chargers, which you guys have on your list, solar and geothermal HVACs. So we, we have case studies all around us that, and metrics that we can use that will put us in a, a good position to be competitive with these communities that are near us that are really moving ahead in terms of being green. They're using permit fee reductions, they're using fast track permitting, they're using building density. And we can start with our municipal buildings because we have control over that and set an example for residential and commercial buildings in the, in the community. But we're only nine years away from the, the first goal, which is the 2031, and then we have the 2041. So we need to do more research, if we need to do more research, we can do that. But we do have a lot of information. We just didn't know where you guys were and how to proceed with this, this conversation. So we're open to kind of getting a feel for, from you as to what, you know, what you think we're, we're ready for here. And one other thing is that we have no idea of what the Biden administration might offer in terms of incentives to municipalities. So we think we should really be looking at more than maybe building density. But we, we want to, and I don't know, Jean, if you want to say anything now or just wait?
Yeah, well, I do want to say that, you know, we started this by our work with CAN. And Louise wrote a white paper that kind of outlined some of this thing. So our work with CAN and some of our work with EAC, we're going to be having a conference call with Doylestown to understand a little bit more about their Greenpoint Plan as well as in addition to the research that's already been done. So, and I would add also that historical preservation is another way to move towards more of a green community. So, you know, things are in the works that are giving us a good start, but we really need to kind of push more than just around the edges, as Louise likes to say. So especially since we have good examples around us.
Yeah.
Just, the folks know CAN. Can you say what that is, please?
Sure. It's climate action, Narber, Narbs and Nirbs, as they like to say. You know, Lower Merion, those folks.
Yeah. And so it's a, it's really a community-based group. People on CAN were Louise and other people responsible for contributing to the Climate Action Plan, the Norbert's CAP. And there's crossover between CAN and EAC with the, with membership. So there's a, there's a similar group in Lower Merion called COM.
Climate Action Lower Merion.
Yeah, that's it.
Do they have a term in Lower Merion that's similar to, to Nirbs?
No, they don't include us. So, you know, this is a deal. Green buildings are a deal, a big deal for greenhouse gas emissions.
So, um, first of all, I hope you had a chance to look at the little paper we did about a year and a half ago that looked at a whole range of ways that might be incentivized through, through zoning in Norbert. Just so you're clear, we don't, while, while just about everyone in this commission, but Jim and I, or I guess Heidi, Jim and Dave are architects practicing, more or less. Uh, we don't deal with building codes per se. Building, like I think the Doylestown and Swarthmore examples you gave us had to do with, you know, ways people could exceed requirements of building codes or certain, you know, building code-related requirements to, to obtain, as you said, financial benefits or fast track approvals. We don't, as the planning commission, we don't manage that. We, we manage more broadly, the, the kind of rules that guide what can be developed, but not so much the details of, of construction. So things that other than, although they're related, you know, things that we've talked about have involved how and when solar panels are appropriate on, on how they're designed on roofs. We've, we've talked a bit about it's Eric, Eric's gone, huh? Oh, wow. We, we've talked a bit about whether there are ways to incentivize stronger stormwater management than the code requires. We've, we've talked about whether there was ways to create incentives for, through uh, density for people adopting sort of performative as opposed to well, performative measures related to, to green buildings, like exceeding requirements by certain amount and so forth. That, those, and those conversations are detailed in, in the, in the paper that I gave you. So I guess, you know, a question for you is what, and taking public buildings out of the mix, although I understand it's always important to think about, like, what, what can the government do first with its resources, right? Theoretically, it's easier to manage. From, from the point of view of building new buildings in, in a place like Norbert, where, you know, most construction's pretty small scale. The building at Forest Avenue is probably the biggest building we'll see for a while. What can you be more specific about the kinds of things you think Norbert should be considering about, about creating incentives, you know, within its building requirements to meet the goals that you, you know, we all hope we can meet?
Are you saying what kinds of things, I mean, I mentioned the kinds of things that in fact make buildings green? You know, things like energy store equipment, insulation, recycled materials, how you deal with water conservation. Are you talking about that kind of thing or are you talking about something else?
Yeah, those, that's kind of the thing I'm talking about. Like, what are the things you think, like, looking at how, what's built in Norbert? What are the sorts of things you think Norbert should focus on incentivizing architects and, you know, building developers to, to focus on?
Well, there is a Greenpoint's Plan. And the, the plan, for example, Doylestown uses, uses it and then Swarthmore adopted it. And it's a plan that actually tells you if you, you know, use recycled materials, you get 1%. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if it's 1%, but let's say 1% off your permit, your permit fee. So there's a way that you can ask builders to do very specific things to make sure that those buildings aren't going to be, are, are going to reach a net zero mission. And you give them, the builders incentives to do this. So there is a, I mean, we can, I can send you the copy of Doyle, Doylestown's Greenpoint Plan. But that's, you know, it's that kind of, like when we were sitting, hearing you talking about Sabine and that whole thing, taking the entire building down and putting something new up. What are they going to be doing in there? Are they going to be doing the, the most green kinds of things? Or are they just going to put up a building and may not worry about any of that? I mean, we're seeing a lot of that for a small, a half-square-mile borough.
And, and, you know, the incentives are in Doylestown's models and Swarthmore and some other communities, there are some financial incentives. And we understand that that's difficult for Norbert. But there are other incentives that can be explored, such as fast, some fast-tracking with permit giving and things like that. We don't have all the answers right now. We're trying to kind of spread the word of the work we're doing and trying to get input from different groups. But these are the kind of things that we were thinking about as far as supporting more, less green materials that were more greenhouse gas emitting, et cetera.
It would be interesting to hear the, the architects here and say whether or not this is becoming so so common that we don't even have to worry that most people who are the development, you know, in the business of building new buildings or even rehab, I mean, residents could be doing some of this stuff in their, in, you know, the people who live in the community could be doing stuff in their own homes if they had more guidance and more you know, requirements and get some tax breaks or whatever. But I'm wondering what the architects are saying in terms of this. But I'm wondering what the architects are saying in terms of this.
Any thoughts, guys?
Well, I, I think that certainly the construction industry generally has, has come a long way uh, in the last 20 years or so in terms of, of, um, recycling and, and separating out waste and things like that. I mean, I think that's become pretty much standard in the industry. I really like the idea of incentives. We've talked about it off and on. You know, here in, at the Planning Commission, um, and in terms of the historic ordinance. You know, I think there's a lot more to be talked about in terms of that. I, when I first started to talk about uh, incentives, I was, in my mind, I was thinking more about, you know, negative, the, the negative aspect, how you penalize uh, a developer for not doing certain things. And I, I've sort of come around looking at it the other way of how do you provide positive incentives to do, to do things that we want to encourage. There's a lot more to talk about, uh, in that area. I think we've just begun. But that, that I find pretty intriguing.
I would comment that, uh, in, in my career, which now spans a significant fraction of a century, we've seen since the Arab oil embargo in 1973, an absolute revolution in energy awareness. Uh, the, the, the current building code, I think it's, it's safe to say, uh, it gets buildings 80% of the way to where you would want to see them from an energy standpoint in the, in an ideal world. It's remarkable how, uh, much improvement is already, uh, codified in, in the, in the building code that we are all required to use compared to what it was just a few years ago. Certainly at the beginning of my professional career, uh, there was almost no concern about energy efficiency. And now it is, um, built in, it's baked into every product you buy practically and into all the regulatory, um, uh, building codes that everyone is required to use. It's not optional, you're required to use it. So, um, we, you know, be of good cheer because we've come, we've come a long way, baby. And we, we have a long way still to go, but there's, there's been remarkable progress. If you're a homeowner and you have an old house, most of the houses in Narberth are old houses, and they are bloody difficult to improve from an energy standpoint. I've been working on my house, uh, in Narberth for 40-odd years. And I, I like to say I'm in the, I'm in the 40th year of the first five-year plan. In terms of, in terms of, uh, uh, upgrades that would, that would register on the scales, on the scale that you folks are using for energy improvements. Now, we've made some, we've made some big improvements. Uh, but the, the, I still have a very long way to go, and I doubt that I'll ever get to the finish line. And that's true for, for most of the older buildings, and most of us live in older buildings in Narberth. There are very, very few new ones. Um, presumably the new ones are being built according to the current, uh, Uniform Construction Code uh, and are therefore miles ahead of where any of the old buildings were from an energy standpoint. But, uh, if you, if you go, if you go and watch what people are purchasing at Home Depot for the, for the, for the renovations of their own houses, you'd be disappointed because the, uh, the, 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 uh, retail, the retail industry, retail construction business is, is, is not focused on energy efficiency to any great degree, except in appliances where you can buy Energy Star water heaters, things like that.
So Jim, you, you're saying that you think that Narberth is in a pretty good place when it comes to, it's building codes for reaching some of these goals that we have in, under, in the cap?
Yes, because Narberth, Narberth's bill code is the same, is the Uniform Construction Code. It's the same statewide now, thankfully.
So we're meeting the state standards? That's what you're saying?
Well, the state standards are applied. Whether we're meeting them is arguable, but no guarantees.
We have the most current building code in Narberth?
I'm sorry?
We have the most current building code in Narberth, or, I don't know, Heidi or Dave, do you know? In the past, you said we're actually like one generation behind or something?
I think it's 2018.
Oh, so that would be.
Um, which is pretty up to date with energy code requirements. Um, and they are pretty strict. They, they keep getting stricter.
We're under the 2018 IBC International Building Code.
Mm-hmm. Be, is it possible to say, like, what that would be the equivalent of in a LEED system? That seems to be a lingua franca that people can use.
LEED usually applies to commercial buildings, so you, you, you know, for individual residences, you don't really, but this list, I'm looking at your Green Points list. The, um, the Swarthmore list. And, I mean, there's, it's great. I mean, there's, it touches on a real, a lot of really good issues, but it's true. A lot of this is covered in the building code requirements. Um, and the, the only thing that worries me about a list like this is that it could change. I mean, there, there's materials on here that will be dropped for newer materials that are better, or they've discovered that recycled materials aren't always the best and greenest for various reasons. You know, you tear a house down with recycled materials, where do you put all that plastic wood? Um, that kind of thing. So, uh, there, it, it's a, it's a little bit of a moving target. And that's why having building codes that are constantly updated by a governing body is really nice to be able to rely on that, on those codes. Because they've looked at it. And, and of course, the Green Building Council is always, um, adding new information too. And if, it's, it's so intensely complicated. I'm always looking into green building for my projects, and it's really hard to keep up. There's so much going on. Um, and all you, and, but I think it's really important to get it out there. I mean, you know, if the materials aren't going to be readily available at Home Depot today, if people start asking for it enough, maybe they will be tomorrow. Um.
Let's, so we have, um, we have new buildings in Narberth, and we have a lot of old buildings in Narberth, which are kind of two buckets, I guess. So for the new buildings, we had in the past year, a major commercial building approved for Montgomery Avenue. Smaller commercial or mixed-use buildings on Montgomery Avenue, two smaller mixed-use buildings on Haverford Avenue. Uh, and a residential building on Windsor Avenue, as well as a few houses, which has been an extraordinary amount of activity.
Right.
Uh, in, for, for Narberth. So I guess one, you know, and, and as you see that when we review a house, there's really not a lot we review. There's a lot more that we review when we review a mixed-use building or a commercial building. So I guess one question would be, what is, what's the delta between what we achieved in Narberth and what you envision we should be achieving? And is that gap definable? And if that gap is definable, how do we get at that gap? Is it a financial incentive, a zoning incentive? And then when you meant things like, um, particular things, like, we looked at Green, for example, in Narberth. I think what we concluded was that for many buildings that would probably be impractical, um, just because of the size of the building and, but it might be more practical to say, you know, we would like you, whatever the basic requirement is by a certain amount, but you can figure out how to do whether it's a green roof or insulation, or whatever means you have to improve your, you know, your, your energy efficiency or greenhouse emissions. So I guess what I'm wondering in terms of new construction, what's, what's the actual gap between what we do now? And that's what we constantly need to evaluate. And then the other question is, we have all these old houses that have old washers and dryers and have old roofs and, and have no insulation. I mean, you know, what do we do about those? And, you know, that's, that's not necessarily things that are major construction projects. It's more just about retrofitting and improving and so forth. And, and that's like the second bucket of, of issues. How do we get at those? Like, different set of issues, right? That's how I feel like it bifurcates. New, what's the delta, old, old buildings, how do we help people do the adjustments and alterations that they need to move forward?
Jim, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that right now, but I, I would say I think focusing on new buildings is something that kind of seems like an easier pathway. Um, but I can't, I, I don't know what the gap is. I think that's why we're exploring with different groups and, and, um, seeing what, um, if our goals, what we need to cap have been reached, is 80% good enough for Narberth? You know, is, is, as Dave was saying, it's an incentive for future building. An incentive system, um, maybe a way to push even further into the 90%. Um, so, uh, we're just wanting to, that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, and we thought that the planning commission was the place where, um, to, I mean, that this was maybe one of the most important places to actually make the case about making sure that we are incentivizing builders. Um, and yet I think, Tada, you said that, uh, that's a wrong assumption?
Well, yes and, I mean, no and, yes and yes, no and no, I don't know. We, we don't, we, we can easily pine to council in general about things, but, um, our provident, our, our area of responsibility is, is looking at things like the subdivision and zoning code and the zoning code, which, which are two of the many codes that govern what happens in Narberth. We don't really have much oversight over the building code. Which is what really is the gritty of how construction is done. Now, it's not to say they're independent of each other. Um, and there may be, so for example, when you talk about incentives, you're right, it, it's possible that incentives like reduced permit fees or related permitting made incentives that are needed, but what we don't know whether it's our responsibility not to think about it, is like, how much an incentive can the borough offer versus what we're asking people to do? Is it? That's, that's actually where we need to get to. We need to actually have that kind of fine-grained analysis of what is the better we are striving for? And how does that compare to what the borough could offer in terms of those incentives? Now, we could get involved with incentives for extra density or, you know, different kinds of development opportunities. But again, as you saw in that paper we wrote two years ago, we need to kind of figure out how do those incentives relate to the benefits we're getting as well as the, the kind of way we understand that development occurs? And so, for example, there's one little area in the borough where the council has authorized four-story buildings. It's really only three blocks, like, five properties. So what I think we recommend it is only allow the fourth story if people do certain things, make it an incentive. And so that would be a place where what you're talking about could be linked to the incentive for development, right? You know, another place to look is, is the borough um, will soon enter into major negotiations about development in the area behind Haverford Avenue in Narberth, where there's a parking lot now, that, 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 there's going to be a lot of change in that area over the next decade or so. There, the borough, as a condition of its negotiations with developers, could simply say, we expect you to meet these standards. Right? That are above and beyond what's in our building code. But what we need to be able to tell people what actually we'd like them to do. That's not, that's above and beyond what's in the code. So that's actually another opportunity. It's, it's more, it's, it's like borough property that the borough, or Sabine Avenue, which is
Right.
What would the borough ask for there? In terms of meeting the, the kind of standards you're, you're putting on the table. It doesn't have to be a building permit reduction. Doesn't have to be expedited approval. It can simply be the terms of the deal, right? So there, those are big opportunities for you as well to think about. And I think you'll find, like, we'll be super supportive of it, but we need to hash out the details, right? And we need people who are experts in the field of not just energy, but also, you know, stormwater or water quality or other issues to help us see what is the, what are the prime opportunities in Narberth that we should be thinking about linking to what we do. That's, aside from Jim and Heidi and Dave, who work with us in their jobs, that's not our, our area of expertise.
Are there specific things that you would, uh, share, uh, send to us that you would, would help you? That we could then put together? Um, we may have this in all of our research anyway, but that would help you all in the way you proceed right now?
Just explain that.
But I mean specifically.
Well, um, I mean, anything that helps us under, I mean, I, I feel a little out of school talking about this with Dave and Heidi here, but I, but I think for me, understanding what's the difference between the codes we have now might be accomplished.
Yeah. Talked about that.
One of those real things that could be asked that are above and beyond what are required now in the codes. Understanding, as Heidi said, it's all a moving target. What's that delta? I think that would help us understand. And if we understood, if I understood the delta, then I could say, oh, well, that, that's something you could address by zoning incentive, or that's something you could address by a financial incentive, or that's something the borough ought to put into its, you know, and it's, it's also things we can talk about. It was amazing how easy it was to to developers about putting bike infrastructure and EV infrastructure in their projects. No one even batted an eyelid about that, right?
Yeah.
But we need to know is to ask for specifically.
Yeah.
You know, about the Green, is what you've prepared is kind of, not what you've prepared, but what you've led us to look at, uh, is kind of an overlay on a building permit application, which, which we don't manage.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. And we appreciate the time, and we'll continue to press on.
Happy to give you time and to, because, you know, we've talked about it before and we kind of got as far as we could. I think you'll find that we're very receptive, that we would help look for solutions, but it's kind of out of our area of expertise. I mean, that's where we need help.
Well, I want, I wanted to say also, Louise and I have been in several of these meetings, um, you know, as, as private citizens, and I'm, I'm so impressed with, um, what the commission does and how you operate as a group. And we were particularly interested in, in the Elmwood project that I know that there was some, we felt some frustration or rant from you about that. So, um, so we, well, thanks again for the opportunity.
Sure, keep in touch, okay?
Yeah.
You will. Thanks very much.
Bye-bye.
Night.
Good night.
Good night. All right, we have one other item of business, if you don't mind, and then public comment. And hopefully we can just item of business quickly. This pertains to section 50502E of the code, which is requirements that pertain to, uh, multifamily houses. As you know, um, that has crossed paths with the Three Elmwood project because the, uh, code now allows a multifamily house to include, uh, five, um, five dwelling units, five units within it. And many of the people who, who made public comment on this issue And many of the people who made public comment on this issue were concerned about that code provision, apart from the development itself. You'll also recall that years ago, we talked about this. And when council asked us, can we review the form-based code and reevaluate some of its provisions? And we did vote to recommend that the change, that that, that number be reduced from five units to three units, that a multifamily house could have three units instead of five. But it was a very close vote. It was one where we had, really did have split opinions among us all. It was either three to two or four to three. I can't remember how many of us run the commission back then. But in council ultimately did not accept that recommendation. And there's debate as to what its reasons were. I don't know that they were ever really documented, but it remains, it remains, as of today, five. I think one of the things we also learned in the review of Three Elmwood, overall, the requirements of how a multifamily house should be designed are not very robust. That, I think we all in our minds just thought that was a provision to allow for the kind of adaptation of existing houses and hadn't really considered that someone might try to build a new, a new building under that. And when we actually tried to pick apart the rules, they didn't give us as much guidance, I think, as we might have wanted for how those buildings would have been developed, had they been developed as multifamily houses. So when I come to you tonight with, is a proposal about this, which is that for the sake of putting ourselves in a better position to take a calm look at this, that we agreed to reduce the number of units in a multifamily house from five to three, which is what we did earlier, just to kind of reaffirm what we did earlier to council. I know council's interested in hearing from us about this. While reaffirming our, our desire to look at ways that we can encourage, continue to encourage diversity of housing types and affordable housing through our zoning code, which would mean looking at issues of how we might try to incentivize smaller houses that would theoretically be less expensive for people, looking at maybe some of the design requirements for multifamily houses, so it's a more logical building type, or thinking of a new building type altogether. It could potentially include looking, again, at the question of accessory dwelling units, but that we commit ourselves sometime later this year to really look at all of the dynamics of our zoning code that relate to diversity and affordability of housing in Norbert. So we have a short term, I'm proposing we take a short-term action, which is to re-recommend to council what we recommended before, and that we commit ourselves to a long-term action, which is to, in a less-charged environment, explore to make sure we're doing everything we can to promote diversity and affordability of housing types through the zoning code. So I'd like to put that out for discussion and ask if others here feel like, you know, that's worth our doing at this point. Any thoughts about that?
Yeah. So I would, I would, yes, I would support reducing it to three, as we recommended years ago. I want to point out, though, with regard to Three Elmwood, those, as they're currently proposed, they are three lots of twos. And I think they could very easily be, you know, if they wanted to, they could render those as, you know, as twin, as six twin lots and have singles, you know, have twins on those. So at this point, that's not at issue, you know, just, just as a point of information.
Yeah, this is not a conversation about Three Elmwood. It's more about what we learned from looking at that application.
Yeah.
And reaction to that, and council's desire to hear our opinion on this again.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think I probably voted for five, to allow for five. And my reasoning would have been because I would have liked to see smaller, the allowance of smaller units. Well, two things. One is, I believe there are a lot of multifamily houses in Norbert that do have more than three, maybe five, I don't know. But also to encourage smaller-sized units. And so maybe what we need to look at in the future is the size of the units that we're talking about, so there wouldn't be three massive apartments. I don't know what they would be. But we need to really, as you suggest, define what, what building type that would be. And because there is no such thing as a new multifamily house, so it seems. It's, it's basically an existing condition that we were labeling in the code.
Any other thoughts about this?
I would like to reaffirm my, my vote for maximum of three from, from the discussion we had several years back. It seems that if there are five, if there are five dwelling unit houses in the town, they would be, they will be grandfathered, and they won't be, they will not be made to go away. So the owners of those properties shouldn't be threatened by this. But going forward, I think the suggestion of, that we've seen at Three Elmwood Avenue is going to attract attention from other developers who will hop on that particular bandwagon, and will be seeing more five-unit multifamily houses here and there. Would be good not to see those.
I agree with that. I'm supportive of the three-unit.
I noted, Chris Young, earlier today, indicated, I guess they had studied at least fourteen, and concluded that the lot wasn't big enough. So yeah, I think people are trying to see how that works. So, and then I, and you're also ready to look at this a little more deliberately in the fall, perhaps when we're, when we're through the historic preservation work. I think Heidi's suggestion was a good one, either the size of the units in, within a multifamily house, or how we might allow for the possibility of just multiple smaller units on a larger lot or something like that. I think, I think it all, it all warrants another, another look. So with that, would someone care to make a motion so that I can forward a recommendation to council?
Dave?
He said? What he said, motion, whatever he said. I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion that we should recommend that, that we, that the maximum number of units within a multifamily house, as described in section 50502B, should be reduced to three from five. And that it is the plating commission's intention later this year to look at a whole range of of issues with new code to ensure that we are considering as strongly as we can the diversity of housing types and opportunities and affordable housing in Norbert through the zoning code. That would be my, so there's a policy recommendation and a policy intent.
Second, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Okay, I will report that back to council. With that, our last item of business is public comment. And the public comment we have came from David Burdo, who happens to be with us tonight. So it is an email that we received several days ago. Good evening, David. Thanks for
How are you?
I'm okay.
Good.
Sticking it out.
Say that one more time.
Thanks for sticking it out tonight.
Oh, sure.
I see the reflection of the computer in your glasses. It looks like you're wearing some cool shades.
I'm not used to it.
Yeah. So David, I'm just going to report briefly, and your email relates to a build-out that was presented in 2017 by the planning commission. It's not displayed in the public, but we seem to be reviewing it before making a recommendation. Where can you obtain this? The second question was, would the Elmwood-Winwood project have been allowed prior to the passing of the form-based zoning code and redo of our parking overlay? Which is, the third question, what's being done to address circulation and street safety? So David, I did not respond to you directly, because I prefer to respond at these meetings. So everyone has a record of it. So my response is, I'm not sure what you're referring to about a build-out. My recollection is we did about a dozen, ten or so, build-out studies of different sites in the borough, which were done in our public meetings. I do not know where the records of those build-outs are anymore, because our planning consultant, who was then Sean Metrick, had them. I don't believe we did an entire model build-out of the borough, which was, which I sense is partly what you're interested in learning about. But Sean did say he had done, he had looked at it and had concluded that the form-based code would generally neutral in terms of the overall potential build-out in the borough. Then that doesn't mean neutral and nothing would change. It just means that if you looked at the sites where development would occur, or the ways that development could occur by aggregating different sites, that it would largely not have a significant impact. And what I, unfortunately, David, I know, I know you well enough to, you're probably thinking, so where's the documentation of that? And that's, that's what I can't offer you, because I don't have that in my records, and I'm not sure we have received documentation of that. So I'm going to ask any of the commissioners who were with us at the time, do you have any recollection of this?
I remember the discussion about density neutrality across the borough. But that's about it. I remember that, and that put everybody at ease, that we weren't, we weren't opening Pandora's box in terms of overall density in the borough. And then we moved on to other matters.
Does anyone have any other recollect, Dave, do you have any other recollections of that?
Not, not at this late hour.
Twenty seven
Four or five years.
2017 would have been well into the adoption of the form code, though. So that may not have been the build-out that Dave Burdo is referring to.
That's correct. I remember. I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
So I'll forward the email. I mean, I think this is kind of a mute point now. However, this is, I'm glad to hear that you're all addressing this reduction from five to three, because it was actually at that meeting that you discussed it around the table, I believe. Dave Brower and Jim Spear were the ones that were kind of doing that, some of that scenario planning. It was along, I believe it was Elmwood Avenue, some properties. And then there was a period of time, for a few months, that you were discussing to the public that you were going to do a build-out, you were going to show everybody, we were going to take a look at it, we were going to see it. I think this discussion started around December of 2016, went into January of 2017, and February of 2017. And then a whole bunch of us showed up from the public to see what you came up with. And then for some reason, you didn't show it to us, and you all discussed it. And that's where, actually, where you had the conversation. Because I actually have the notes here from 2017, from where you had the discussion about reducing from five to three. And, which I was in, I thought it would be a good way to, you know, instead of going from one to two or you need to go up to, you know, bring it to three right now. So at least, sorry, I'm moving around a little bit in my head and trying to verbalize this, but it seems like you're moving in the right direction. Bringing this, bringing this down from, bringing this down from five, down, down to three, because it was too much in the area, and we can see that, you know, you do it in little pieces and to see what happens and see how things work out over a number of years. And then things seem to be moving along in the right direction. You loosen it up a little bit more. It seems like we're pulling back the reins now, because of some concerns that you may have.
Yeah, not mentioning, yeah, I do remember. I did, I did a whole series of, of studies. The other, there was that, all those properties along Elmwood Avenue, there were five or six lots, and how they subdivided and maximized number of units. And then there was another study I did on Essex, on both North and South Essex avenues, as I recall. I, I think I even know where they are, as a matter of fact. I think I can probably find them if there was a real desire to see them again.
Yeah, and my, you know, from my standpoint, you know, when you, when you look at and we're seeing it with this development, and this is where my concern is, and the one, and then moving forward, and it was brought to the last meeting, the concerns that we have along Winwood Avenue. And if you take a look over time, you know, and I've only been here for 21 or 22 years in the borough, but in that period of time, you take a look at, with the exception of Elmwood, because that bridge has been closed for some time, at least as long as I, I think I've been here since 1999. But you take a look at some of the changes in the traffic patterns, and you take a look at the tunnel. And the history of the tunnel is a shame that the roundabout was never put there. I thought that was a great idea. For a period of time on, I'm trying to remember the name of the road, not Elmwood, the next one down from Elmwood.
Woodside?
Woodside, from Woodside, you know, until recently, couldn't make a left-hand turn out of Woodside, right? Because there were car accidents and people were getting hurt. You can't make a left-hand turn on the corner of, I believe it's Windsor and Iona in the morning, because they're concerned, there's concerns there. So when you take a look at the different, and the bridge, and you take a look at the different, just the, just in the period of time I've been here, and we're now adding over 100 livable units. If you figure, you know, you're going to get one and a half cars per unit. And if I take a look at the comprehensive plan, if you says here over, you know, about somewhere around 60 to 65% of the people, now, we're in different times in the borough because of, you know, COVID and everything. But if you take a look at that number, you're looking at, you know, if those numbers are accurate, you're looking at when things loosen up again, 60 cars, 60 people commuting to work potentially. Right? So what does that traffic flow look like? And I just can speak from firsthand experience. Before the bridge closed down, you know, we had, you know, cars come flying up and down our streets. At least, you know, what I see on Chestnut Avenue. So my concern is the same thing, I think, that Mr. Cornwall brought up at the last meeting. It seems somebody could be getting hurt. And so what types of things can we be recommending? Could the planning commission recommend to, you know, take care of this? Because over 20 years, you know, the tunnel at Norbert, you know, you couldn't make a left-hand turn out of there. There's a reason there's a traffic light there. There's a reason why you couldn't make the left turn, turn coming out of Woodside Avenue. So, I mean, I'm all for increasing density. I think it's a good thing for the community, but you have to think about the things that sometimes come along with that as well. So that was my third question, which is, right now, what can be done moving forward? It's not necessarily reactionary, but it's a little proactive as we start adding, you know, more cars to the borough.
I was surprised to learn we have a borough traffic engineer. I didn't know that. And I'm not sure if that's been, that's been something that we've had for a long time. It is, it is a person who works for Canoni with So I think one of the things we could do is So I think one of the things we could do is, is ask that person to begin to look at the questions you're raising. I will note, I was kind of curious to see the stop sign that was put up at Forest and Windsor.
Boy, was that wonderful. I've been waiting for years for that.
Yeah. I mean, it feels to me, Dave, like probably a lot of modest traffic improvements, like stop signs and things like that, that would just slow people down. And the other issue, which we talk about, we muse about all the time here, simply, you know, enforcing the rules that we have. I mean, you know, speeding, stop sign running, that's, that's not, in a way, it's not a quantitative issue. It's, it's already happening all the time, right? And, and we don't, I don't know why, it's hard to enforce those things, I guess, but, but that would simply, that would be another, another step is to ask the mayor and the police to do more about dealing with people who go too fast and who don't stop at stop signs, which is, which are the dangerous acts, right? We don't deal with the dangerous acts that happen. So those would, those would be some of the steps, I think, that, that one could take.
I'd say not, I'd say another thing, the borough is currently looking into the concept of complete streets, particularly pot, with the possibility on Windsor and maybe on Norbert Ave, and maybe other places too, which, which would introduce more features into the street, potentially constricting it, potentially, you know, slowing the traffic due to bump outs, due to the addition of possibly a bike lane. Once you, once you narrow the traffic, you get a natural slowing of traffic flow.
Yeah.
I think that could work. Another, another thing I think I want to mention, I think, I, I wrote back to Dave, is that residential use is, it may sound counterintuitive, but residential use is lighter than commercial use of a property. And even though we're adding units at the corner of Forest and Windsor, you know, I believe that the residential traffic there, the, the car use there is, is going to go down.
When it wasn't fully occupied.
I, I, I certainly, you know, I certainly hope so. I just think you have to think, you think of some of these other things that come along with it. I mean, growing up in the area as well, you know, growing up here, leaving, coming back, I can just say from firsthand experience, I have not seen a reduction, I mean, of, of cars and car usage, even if there might be a reduction of, I mean, I do see now some reduction, maybe some residential car usage, but on the flip side, I see a lot more delivery trucks. I see a lot more, you know, of the, you know, the, the, the delivery organizations are delivering stuff and, you know, and that's a whole other, whole other, you know, set of problems sometimes we may, we may have, speeding up and down. So anyway.
You know, though, there's, there's an apartment complex on the south side, right by the bridge. I think it's called Woodside Court. Is that what it is there? It's two buildings.
I don't know if that's what it's called, but I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. So it's two buildings. I think it has 16 units between the two buildings. Each unit has two parking spaces and it's a single point of access of, and entrance. So if you, I guess for anyone interested in what 16 units of apartments and up to 32 cars looks like, go look at that driveway. You can see all the traffic moving in and out of that driveway. If that bothers you, then 32 units bothers you, you know? That's, it's a, I think it's a useful exercise to look at what 16 units of apartments, of residential apartments, looks like for car use, just because it all flows past the same spot.
Dave, your other question was, could the project at Three Elmwood have been built under the old code? I will, I will still stand by my previous answer, which is it's not our job to evaluate applications under codes that don't exist anymore. But I did check into it, just because you asked. And it appears, you know, without like doing a study like, like a, you know, a real land surveyor or developer would do, it appears as if the proposal, which is now working its way through the process, could be built. The more dense proposals could, it would probably have a slightly different configuration. There's some quirks about twins and that I wasn't quite able to game out and some odd rules about, about the parking, I wasn't able to game out. And you'd have to kind of make assumptions about whether variances would be given for something because of the slopes and so forth. But I, I think the bottom line is something of the density of which is now being considered, or at least has received tentative sketch grant approval, which is six, which is three twins, could have, could be built there, could have been built there. The, um, parking would probably have to be designed differently. The, one interesting difference is under the old code, it would have required two units per, two parking spaces per unit, whereas under our code, it would now only require one space per unit. So they could have built it with less parking had they wanted to. And that's a whole nother issue with that crazy site. So I think by and large, a smart, smart site planner would have figured out how to build three twins on that site. They probably wouldn't have been able to build much more though. That's the best answer we can give without actually hiring a consultant to do a site plan for you.
And I think that we're lucky that, you know, they, they made some changes to it.
Well, I know Chris is on the phone, the line. I, I will say that, um, there were a lot of hard meetings and I think, I think that the, 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 um, those in the community who vocalized their concerns made a difference in this matter. And I, and I think that the applicant was very sincere about trying to respond to them as well as, as well as possible. So I, that, if nothing else, should encourage everyone to come out and keep commenting on these projects. So, Ira, do you have any comments tonight or are you just here?
Just one quick question, and you probably can't answer it, but I'm going to ask anyway. Do you have some sense of what percentage of the borough would fall under a historic district? And I'm not looking for a precise number, but like, just like, is it 10% or is it 80%?
Um, I would probably say it would be closer to 80 than 10. Based, I mean, you can read our report, which I referred you to before from last year, January, which said we felt it would probably cover much of the borough and probably focus on the late 19th century and the first half of the 20th century history of, of the borough, which is still somewhat intact. But I, I don't want that to scare people, because as you can see, what we're really trying to grapple with is, is what would that actually mean, right? I, I found myself talking to a council member and saying like, most of the things we're talking about would, would apply to the next guy. Like if you sold your property to someone else who wanted to renovate it or build a new building or something. But I, I think, I think this story of Norbert, and I mentioned, Kathleen is not with us anymore, but really is about that time from the late 19th century, right, to when autos really began to emerge on the scene, you know? Maybe pre-war, maybe just post-war. That's, that's the kind of era of, of, of significance, I think, that, that we would try to define and then find where does that locate it? And that would probably cover much of the borough.
That's great. Thank you. Answered, asked and answered. Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, folks, I appreciate all your time. We covered a ton of ground. I appreciate Ira and Dave hanging out with us tonight.
Thanks, Todd.
And we will see you. We'll need a, first of all, a motion to adjourn and a motion to offer the, the deepest possible appreciation to Jim Spear for all his, for all his service. Can we combine those into one motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Jim, thanks so much.
Thanks. See you on the other side.
Okay.
Good night.
All right, good night, everybody.